Mics, Ron. Good evening, everybody. For the record, 5:15 PM, April 13th, 2023, we are just out of executive sessions. I've called the meeting to order. We always start our meetings with that pledge to the flag. So Councilmember Kulas, would you lead us?
Please rise.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. Roll call this evening. We have all seven councilmembers with us today. It's always great to have everybody here tonight. So for some of you who haven't been here in a while, our agenda changes a little bit. So we are required now, under the Public Meetings Act, to have citizen comment first. So if you are here tonight regarding any of the items that are on our agenda this evening, except for the public hearing item regarding the Wheeler Amendment to the Development Agreement. But if you're here for any other item this evening or just wish to make a regular public comment, we would ask that you come up and give us your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes or so. So if anybody wants to come up and say a few words on anything on tonight's agenda or just something for good of the order, this would be a time to do so. Come on up. How are you this evening?
I'm good, good. Thank you very much. I see I have three minutes.
Well, short of three minutes.
Well, that's good. I have three minutes. My name is Deborah Herke, and I am the past president of Velocity Swim Team. And my address, 2238 Second Street, Southeast in East Wenatchee, or the city pool, or the EAC. You can find me there as well. I, to begin, I'd like to thank the city council, each and every one of you, for supporting our aquatics program and all aquatics programs here in Wenatchee in the valley. We'd like to thank you for the improvement of the city pool. Without this support from all of you, we would not be able to host the Apple Capital Swim Meet. Apple Capital Swim Meet, for us, is the largest 50-meter outdoor swim meet in the state of Washington. This is also the third-largest income touring revenue spending generator for the Wenatchee Valley. And it's going to be a big one again this year. We already have 900 swimmers attending, and that's just swimmers. Those are just athletes. That's not families and siblings and everything else. So we're very excited about that. In addition, we'd like to thank the park staff. Without the park staff and all of your help, support, and patience, year after year, to make Apple Capital, the Starlight Swim Meet, and a host of other events possible, we wouldn't be here. And we're working on over 50-plus years at Apple Capital and as an organization, swim organization, here in the Wenatchee Valley. So at this time, and on behalf of all Velocity Swimming Team, the organization, we present the city with these gifts to be used and with our utmost and deepest gratitude. You have no idea. So at this time...
What are we getting?
So at this time, you're going to be receiving two backboards. These are for, basically, fire, not fire safety, but lifeguarding. Lifeguard safety, sorry. Lifeguard safety. We have epi pens. We've got, you know, umbrellas, two big umbrellas. We've got, again, lifeguarding from the American Red Cross, everything you could possibly need for that. These are all new items and adding some new stuff as well. It's like Christmas. It's like Christmas. That is, I believe, that is one of two umbrellas. Yeah, the umbrellas, two backboards. We've got a number of, I want to say AED, but we do not have AEDs, but we've got epi pens. We have masks for all different sizes because of the city pool and for children. So we've got some annies in there for life-saving, for CPR, and as well as a baby.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
So thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Where should we put these? Put it back in the corner? Okay, we'll put it back there.
Just line them up here.
All right. Thanks.
You can correct my name.
So now that everyone else in the room knows you need to bring us a gift if you'd like to speak again. So who's next? Anybody else wish to address the council on anything that's on tonight's agenda or something for good of the order? See, no other takers. We'll move on to our agenda items. The first is regarding our consent items, which include tonight's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings, and appointing Alan Beidler to the Housing Authority.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items consisting of the agenda for this evening's meeting, vouchers, minutes of previous... I'll get these fixed eventually. Minutes from previous meetings and Resolution Number 2023-07, reappointing Alan Beidler to the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Schenland County and the City of Wenatchee for a term ending April 21, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember, was it Hornby? Or was it Huffaker? Councilmember Huffaker to adopt this evening's agenda, vouchers, and minutes from our previous meetings and to adopt Resolution, excuse me, 2023-07, reappointing Alan Beidler to the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Schenland County and the City of Wenatchee for a term ending April 21, 2026. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four presentations tonight. The first is an Arbor Day proclamation. Who has the Arbor Day proclamation?
I do, sir.
Councilmember Cuevas. Would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Whereas the Greater Wenatchee Arbor Day Committee has distributed trees in north-central Washington for over 30 years. And whereas Arbor Day celebrations have provided over 175,000 trees to be planted in our area. And whereas trees, a renewable resource, cool our homes, clear the air, and provide food and shelter for birds and beneficial insects. And whereas planting trees beautifies our community and provides a healthy, happy family activity. And whereas to help celebrate Arbor Day, seedlings will be distributed by the Greater Wenatchee Arbor Day Committee. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, hereby proclaim April 22, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Wenatchee. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our community forestry resources. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to glatten the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. A witness whereof, I have here onto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 13th day of April, 2023. Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. Is someone here from the Arbor Day? Oh, Lyle. How are you, sir? At least I can still shake your right hand, right?
Yeah, it's one not broken.
What are you going to break with your hands, though, right?
Oh, I fell. I tried to tell them I was assaulted by two, three guys.
That's for you. Thank you. You know, I have to remember the microphone.
Okay, just to announce, the distribution location will be Martin's Market from 9:00 to 12:00, East Wenatchee City Hall from 9:00 to 12:00, Pibus Market from 10:00 to 2:00, and Andy's City Call from 9:00 to 12:00. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Jose?
Thank you, Lyle.
Thank you, Lyle. Appreciate you being here. All right. And our next proclamation today is Stand Against Racism proclamation. Councilmember Roger Nastatia, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas all residents, regardless of race, creed, or ethnicity, deserve to be treated with dignity, respect, compassion, and justice. And whereas Wenatchee/Washington residents value initiatives that will end race-based disparities and make the world a more equitable, inclusive, and dignified place for all to live. And whereas the elimination of racism can be achieved only with the participation of all residents in dialogue, reflection, and action. And whereas the City of Wenatchee/Washington supports YWCA North-Central Washington in its praiseworthy mission to eliminate racism, empower women, stand up for social justice, help families, and strengthen communities. And whereas the City of Wenatchee proudly supports the Wenatchee Valley College and YWCA in celebration of Stand Against Racism to build community among those who work for racial justice, to raise awareness about the negative impact of institutional and structural racism in our communities. Be it resolved that the City of Wenatchee/Washington hereby declares April 27, 2023, as YWCA Stand Against Racism Day and encourages residents, local businesses, educators, and community and faith-based organizations to celebrate diversity and advocate for the elimination of racism. Be it further resolved that April 28 through April 30, 2023, is declared as YWCA Stand Against Racism Weekend. Signed this 13th day of April, 2023, Frank J. Coons, City of Wenatchee Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody here from the YWCA? Oh, how are you? There you are.
Rachel today.
I'm good, how are you?
Good, nice to see you.
Yeah, thank you.
Want to address the council for a minute?
Yes, for sure. Yeah. Oh, this is great. This is even on shiny paper. This is not something at nonprofits that we're used to seeing. This is nice paper.
If you need to borrow some nice paper, we'll loan you some.
I'll walk down. I know where to go. So thank you so much for doing this. This is a number of years in a row that this city council and the mayor have decided to sign this and make this proclamation. It's so important in our community and wanted to invite, I know that you folks have a city council meeting the evening that we're doing our Stand Against Racism, but if you're able to, if you leave early or if it ends early, feel free to come by our parking lot. It's going to, we're going to have a block party. We're going to have tacos and tamales and some music. And the most exciting thing about our Stand Against Racism event this year is that it's primarily youth-led. So we'll have a lot of young people who are leading it, who would love to see elected officials also in the mix with them. So if you're able to, definitely stop by.
So I just put it on my calendar, and if I get out of here on time, I'll walk right down. What time does it start? And what time do you think it's going to end?
So it's probably, we will be in our parking lot by around 5:45 or 6:00, and we'll be there till like 7:30.
Okay. So as soon as that meeting's over, I'm walking down there.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rachel. All right. We have a couple of updates. The first being from our friends at the Wenatchee Valley Senior Center. And I see Dave Tosh is here. And come on up, sir. You look awful tan. Talk about where you've been this winter, or...
A couple trips to Arizona. My wife has become a snowbird. I go back and forth. And she's hounding me all the time as to when I'm going to retire. So I have not announced a date, but I am getting older. I appreciate you inviting me here tonight. That was kind of a surprise. We love to talk about the Senior Center. And if somebody's got a hook, you might want to use it on me because I understand I only got 10 minutes or so, and I could talk all night. But let me try and shorten it up as best I can. We have a really nice activity center out on Maple Street. It's been there 30 years. We maintained the building on our own. We've done a lot of good for the community. The issue we have right now is it is an activity center for seniors. It's not a nursing home, which many in our community think we are because I get asked all the time, how many residents do I have? And how many beds do we have? No, we're not. We are an activity center. The issue we have and the challenge we have right now is half of the building is occupied by a store, the thrift store, which is, I think, at this point, well-known in the community. It's open to all ages. It's open to the community. We've got over that bridge because years ago, it was thought that it was just for seniors. So we've made progress there. The issue, again, is that we're trying to deal with a space limitation that we have for activities. The thrift store expanded during COVID because we were unable to open the Senior Center proper, but we were able to operate a store, and so it expanded. And of course, our revenues skyrocketed and donations poured in, and that's where 60% of our resources come from, is the thrift store. We're completely independent. We rely on a lot of donations, not only in the store, but also monetary donations to keep alive. We have memberships. We have a lot of things that we offer there, and the parking lot's full. And they're clamoring for more activities. So what are we doing about it? I will say that last September is when we began the process of looking into adding to the current building. And let's just say, an extension to the north. The city has been very cooperative with us. We had a few lumps there early on, but they've been working with us, giving us some ideas. We have been working with one of the local architectural firms, but it seems like we've kind of reached a stalemate. And I know everybody has heard this, but everybody is busy. And so we have not made much progress at all. I've been in touch with the folks that we've been working with, and it's just really difficult right now finding the professional expertise to move forward. So we don't have any cost estimates, and that's difficult to go to the board or the membership and say, hey, we need a whole bunch of money to add. And, you know, we have no answers. So we are working on that as best we can. And we'll see if we can make some more progress in the near future. Obviously, a lot of the seniors that were unable to come back and some of the groups have written letters and complained about why we can't host their activities. I will say this also, that our generation of seniors has different interests. I'm talking about the Baby Boomers. And, you know, if the building were to be constructed today, it would look much different and probably be even more focused on things like exercise. And that's where we're seeing the greatest amount of activity is in that arena. And what we have to offer is a dance floor that we do exercise on, all day long and a lot of evenings. But again, we have a great facility. We want to, you know, try to offer it up to the community when we can. We had a recent father-daughter dance that was, you know, well-publicized in the paper, and we got a lot of good feedback on that. I think that helps us in the community.
How many lunches you do in a day now?
Yeah. So I was just going to touch on the lunches. The one area that we're struggling with is the lunch program. We serve lunch Tuesday through Friday, four days a week, right at noon. We are seeing a little bit of an increase over time, but we're still going backwards in terms of the finances. And, you know, it's our biggest challenge, bringing seniors in. They're very uncomfortable yet with the COVID situation. Many of them have experienced COVID, and they just don't feel comfortable coming out and having this social engagement at a table with a bunch of seniors. So again, we're seeing some new people coming in. It makes us believe that we're on the right path, but it's been a lot slower than what we thought it would be. So, yeah, we're going backwards on the lunch program to the tune of about $3,000 a month. And we're having to eat that, but we want to keep it going with the hopes that people will continue to come out and frequent the seniors.
And if you guys remember, we did give them some ARP money because their food, you know, during COVID, they got rid of all of the food. When they got started again, we gave them some seed money to get their refrigerators and freezers full of some food.
And we did that.
Yeah.
And it's just...
And if you haven't been there for lunch, you need to go and just, it's, one of the coolest places I've been in this whole town was back pre-COVID, when you go there for lunch and there'd be well over 100 people in there. And many of them, that was their meal for the day and socializing and chatting and, yeah.
Yeah. We, when I first got there 10 years ago, we probably had a nucleus of 30 or so that would come every single day. Didn't matter what we served. They were there with their friends to have lunch. And we don't see as much of that anymore. Now, we do have some themed days, and I'll use the example of our Western Day, where we serve a really nice pot roast, a full meal, and we'll have 150 people.
Okay.
But that's a themed day, and it costs us a lot more for that to happen. I will say that there are days where we serve a casserole that we may have 12 or 15. So that's the challenge, is trying to build those other days back up again. The other thing I'd like to say is the community, though, has been very supportive. Our volunteer force has never been this robust. And we're seeing a lot of people that are coming in and wanting to volunteer, and that's helping us in the store and also with lunch program. We used to have three paid staff in our kitchen, and we're down to one now. And we're continuing to restructure the front office in terms of better use of technology and trying to do things with Baby Boomers that the older seniors weren't comfortable with, like mass emails and not printing a newsletter and mailing it. The idea being that we might save some money by putting that on our website and having people opt out of a printed copy. So those are all examples that we're trying to make some changes for the future. So I think I've probably talked long enough. Is that right?
I think we still do. We give you continual, a $3,000 or $4,000 a year stipend. Do we still do that?
We get $2,500 from the City of Wenatchee. We have an $800,000 budget. But I do appreciate the help that you've given us with the COVID relief and, yeah.
Okay. So I think going forward, yeah, go ahead, Keith.
I just wanted to know how old you had to be to be a member of the Senior Center?
Our mission statement is that we serve the population 58, 50 and older. And...
So in a few years, Keith, you can join.
But I'm actually a member already. And if you're a member, then you can do things like come on Mondays and Fridays and do line dancing and exercise programs and all that.
We offer quite a few activities, actually.
And it seems like you've got a fundraiser coming up?
Yeah. We're going to do our crab feed that we haven't had in four years. It's very popular in the community. That's the big one upcoming. We have never even had to advertise it, and we've always sold it out. So we get a few sponsors for that. The prices are going up, of course. But we're expecting on June 10 to have a really, really good crowd at the Senior Center and raise some money for the seniors. Yeah.
Don't wait until the last minute to get your tickets, or you won't get in.
Yeah. We have sold out in the past weeks before the event. We'll see what happens this year.
Well, Dave, thanks for being here. And let us know how we can support you. And I just, again, I think it's a wonderful spot and think to this extent that we can continue to support the operations and keep those meals going and keep that going. As a city, we should try to figure out a partner with you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, David. And the next one that we give a little money to every year is the Spirit of Wenatchee. How are you today?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Thank you for the invitation.
You bet.
My name's Greg Brizendein. I'm one of nine board members that run the whole Spirit of Wenatchee Miss Feed All project out here. And it's a cool story. And I'm going to try to cut this down to just some very relevant parts or points, and then maybe you can ask some questions, so. You guys have supported us in the past, and we appreciate that very, very much because without your support and some others, we wouldn't be able to carry on the recognition of the Pingborn and Herndon adventure in their life. So, and as you know, it was the first non-stop trans-Pacific flight from Misawa, Japan, to ended up landing over here in East Wenatchee upon the bluff. So we do annual flights around the Kitty Parade. We do the Apple Blossom Grand Parade. We do the annual Sister City flights when we have visitors come over from Misawa, Japan. We honor the requests from the Chamber of Commerce for guided tours of the Miss Feed All and do presentations for groups. Last summer, there were three of those events that we did. I don't know if you guys saw here on King Five News a few weeks ago, but King Five...
I haven't seen it, but I heard about it, yeah.
King Five came over and did a video of the aircraft out there at the hangar, and we got to tell part of the story. And it's shown at least two times on the evening program. So that was pretty cool to have them hear about the Miss Feed All. We have a school outreach program. Last summer, we hosted more than 300 Wenatchee School District third, fourth, and fifth grade students along with their teachers and chaperones. That was a big event. We coordinated with the fire department and the maintenance crew out there, and we had the big airport sweeper there and the great big water truck. And so they did their little show. And so it was really fun for the kids. Whenever we fly the Miss Feed All, we try to fly over Wenatchee and East Wenatchee to show that we're still active and moving along.
You can sure hear it when it's flying.
It, it is noisy. It's, and if you haven't been close to it or been around it, I would love to show you out there at the hangar that we have out there at the airport, a close-up. And you can crawl in if you can get through the window. So it's a very unique and awesome aircraft. Not easy to fly, but awesome aircraft. So we do, we continue to do all the air shows around the Northwest and in Canada. We do the annual Abbotsford up here. There's well over 100,000 visitors that come in, and we get to share the story of the Miss Feed All. So we go other locations also, but I would be glad to answer any kind of questions.
So how much money do we give you? And then how much is out of your total budget? We give you $3,000?
You give $3,000 every year. City of East Wenatchee gives $3,000. We have Douglas County giving us $5,000. And that's pretty much it unless we go to the local chambers or some other local grants that we go for, for special projects. So.
Great. Well, it's a great story. Councilmember Kulas and I are off to Misawa, Japan this summer, me for my last trip, and so we'll be doing...
Awesome.
...presenting us. I love seeing the plane fly. Yeah, it's just amazing.
And Misawa, when you go visit, you'll get to see there. It's a holiday over there. They have a parade.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's pretty cool, so.[1603.05]
Great.
Again, thank you again for all your support.
Yeah, that's great. All right. That takes care of our presentations tonight. So we have a number of action items. The first is regarding the salary commission. So Human Resources Director Carrie Page. Hi, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. For record, Carrie Page, Director of Human Resources. I am here this evening to request a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-04 that will revise city code by including a new chapter that would create a salary commission. The salary commission will review, establish, and adjust salaries for council members following RCW 352115. The salary commission will consist of three members who will serve without compensation. Members must be a resident of the city as well as Shalane County and a registered voter as well. They will have no affiliation with the city organization or via family members as well. The mayor will appoint members to the commission subject to city council approval. Members will serve a three-year term with the exception of the initial startup term, which will be a staggered one, two, and three-year term. No member may serve more than two terms, whether that's consecutively or not. The salary commission will meet at minimum in September of each year. The quorum will be three members and two members will be sufficient for action. The salary commission will file a salary schedule for council members with the city clerk by October 15th of each year. And any increase or decrease will be incorporated into the city budget without further action from the city council. If there is an increase that will take effect the first of the following year, January 1, and any decrease would take effect at the beginning of the next subsequent term of office. And that concludes my presentation.
So thanks, Carrie. I know we talked about this, I don't know, a month or so ago. And hopefully we've incorporated all of the council's recommendations in terms of quorums and how they meet. I've actually been approached by someone who I think would be a great member to actually join the salary commission. So I think I'll be able to find two or three folks relatively quickly to get in front of you, maybe even in the next six weeks or so, to get the commission formed. So I had someone come up with me who I said they'd like to be on it, who has actually served on our city council in the past and is a resident of the area and I think wants to, wants to be involved in that. So. Any questions for Carrie?
I just like the language, like no, there's no conflicts now. And it's, and it's great for you to do this and Councilmember Kulas to bring this to our attention. And I know other cities are doing this, but it's, it's kind of a relief, I think, sitting, sitting here, just doing what we're supposed to be doing.
And Carrie mentioned a finance committee today that of our comparable cities that we use for salaries and stuff, she thinks about half are currently using the commission
Correct.
as opposed to the other way. All right. Any other questions for Carrie? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2000-04 revising the Wenatchee city code to include a new chapter known as Chapter 1.62, which creates a salary commission and provides for the duties thereof and the appointment of the members thereto.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby to adopt ordinance number 2023-04 revising the Wenatchee city code to include a new chapter known as Chapter 1.62, which creates a salary commission, provides for the duties thereof, and the appointment of members thereto. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danielle, for your work on this. And Carrie, let's meet in the next two or three weeks and come up with a game plan. Thank you. Mr. Erickson, we've got some potential donation of public art and the Native Peoples Project and the maintenance agreement. So let you go.
Seven agenda items packed into three, three topics.
Excellent. Nice work.
So thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. The first two items we have are, we came bearing gifts, you know, just like
Thank you.
So we have the donation of some sculptures. So we have two separate motions. These have both been recommended for approval by the Arts, Rec and Park Commission. The first set of donations are three sculptures by the artist Bernard Hosi. He was a Twisp artist. And some of his sculptures were made available by his estate. He passed away in 2012. It was nine sculptures. And so we reviewed all those nine sculptures. The Arts, Rec and Park Commission looked at them, narrowed that list down to three. The sculptures are actually located in Walla Walla. And the donor was really hoping to find a location where they could be out and viewed by the public. So that was one of, one of their goals. So they actually reached out to us as well as several other cities. Our only cost would be the transport and installation of the sculptures themselves. So I'll walk through those real quick. So the first one is called Slab Gate. And one of our goals is to extend artwork down the loop trail. You know, we have areas of it. We have a sculpture on the picture there. It's right outside the dog off-leash area called Labrador Retriever. This would add another piece in between. Yeah. And so our cost would be putting in the concrete foundation for that one. Oh, I should mention that the estimated, preliminary estimated value for all the sculptures is $60,000. That would be confirmed through an appraisal process when we do our next appraisal, if these are accepted. The other two sculptures are Iron Works and Sphere Pilot House. So Iron Works has sort of been targeted to be placed at the new, what will be a new exit plaza off of the pedestrian bridge extension. So when the Black Bridge gets extended across the train tracks, the sculpture would go in that plaza area. And then the other one, we're still arm wrestling over where that location would be. This was the favorite choice out of all, out of the commissioners. So we have a couple of locations in mind, but we haven't narrowed that down yet. So with that, I try to answer any questions you might have on that, that topic. Oh, this is, oh, sorry. I'll do the next donation first and then, then we can answer them. So the next donation, this comes courtesy of Beauty of Bronze, Adele Wolford, who's back here. And this is commissioned by the Beauty of Bronze. It's a sculpture called Roseanne's Tango. And it's in honor of Roseanne Lind, who is really instrumental in the Beauty of Bronze program, which, how many thousand, 10, 10,000 kids maybe went through that program?
At least.
Through the school district. So this is a bronze sculpture created by Kevin Patel. He's a local sculptor that you probably recognize his work. He did PED, which is the big foot down on the river, Gapo, which is outside the YMCA, and a number of others that are in our collection. So that, they would like to donate this to the city. Short term, it would be located at the convention center by the plaza. And then once construction starts, we would remove it so it's safe during construction at the convention center and find a home for it after the riverfront park first phase is completed. And it would find a permanent home down by the rivers, kind of the plan on this one.
Can you tell us again what the size of that is?
Yeah, Adele, is it like 26 inches tall, wide and wide?
Well, it's a total with the base, it's about six feet.
Six feet?
Mm-hmm.
Six feet. So bigger than 26 inches.
It's beautiful. It's just stunningly beautiful.
That's awesome. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. So I see in our agenda item that I see us accepting the Sphere Pilot House, Slab Gate, and Iron Works, but I don't see us accepting this one. Is that, should we have a
We should have
Add to the motion to make sure that we accept Roseanne's Tango?
Yes.
From Mr. Patel. And who currently owns it?
Roseanne's Tango? That's Beauty of Bronze.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I have it, I have the motion in my agenda report. It just didn't make it, I guess, on the
Okay.
Agenda.
So whoever makes the motion will make sure they add the Roseanne's Tango to it. Any questions for Dave? I think at this point, you know, we're not spending any money to purchase the art. We'll spend some money to get it installed and the stuff that's in Walla Walla shipped up or we'll go get it and
We'll go get it, yeah.
Yeah. So really not much cost to the city. And I think the more we can do to keep this place beautiful. And I hear from visitors all the time how wonderful our art collection is. And it's fun to see it downtown and in the park system. So.
It was a nice opportunity, especially the sculptures in Walla Walla. You know, our cost will be, the sculptures we chose were ones of size that we could actually handle ourselves.
Okay.
So our guys would go down, pick them up, bring them back, and do the install. So we're really, you know, staff time and some fuel cost really is the big, big cost to get those.
Excellent. Any questions for Dave or anything? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for a city council to accept the donation of the Bernard Hosi sculptures, Iron Works, Sphere Pilot House, and Slab Gate from Judith Schulman and, and also Roseanne's Tango from Beauty of Bronze to add to the sculptures to the public art collection.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostiti and second by Councilmember Cuevas to accept the donation of the Bernard Hosi sculptures, Iron Works, Sphere Pilot House, and Slab Gate from Judith Schulman, and also Roseanne's Tango by Kevin Patel from the Beauty of Bronze to the City of Wenatchee's Public Art Collection. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David. Thanks, Adele, for all your work in arts for all those years and keep our sculptures in great shape.
We've made a mark.
Yes, we have. You've made a mark. We've just helping you make a mark. But yeah, you've done most of the late work. All right. Native Peoples Project. David, what's the update?
Okay, so you guys have seen this before lots of times. So this evening, we're requesting approval of three separate art, artist agreements for the project. So four main pieces in this project, we have the plaza and then the three separate sculptural elements that have kind of worked their way through the design process since it really was first thought of back in 2015. The center sculpture, and that'll go in the middle of kind of the plaza area, kind of represents the past of the tribe. There'll be another sculpture on the northern section that sort of represents the future of the tribe, the bright future. And then there'll be interpretive sign elements around the outside in the plaza, excuse me, in the planter areas themselves, fully ADA accessible and all that good stuff. So we have been working to identify and secure the services of different artists who have different styles to create these sculptures. We've also been working with the tribe as well to make sure that we're on track and everything. And they're very excited about the project. The ultimate goal of this is to complete the entire project by Indigenous Peoples' Day, October 13th of 2025.
Okay.
It takes a while to do the artwork. The plaza itself is in final engineering right now with hopes that we can get the plaza piece constructed later this summer into the fall. Tell you a little bit about the artists. First one is Judd Turner out of Eugene, Oregon. And so we selected him out of 350 artists on the Washington Artist Register. He's very excited about the project, has done similar kind of sculptures in the past, is really excited about involving the community and the tribe in kind of the creation of the art piece. The other two are Kevin Patel, who you heard of earlier, and there's some samples of his work there. He would be doing the sculpture on the north side and is also really excited about the project. I've talked to him about it. And then the third artist is Swede Albert. He's a very brand new artist out of Omac, and he's a Wenatchee tribal member. So we would have him doing the interpretive sign bases that are going to be geared off of the legends of the past. So he's excited for the opportunity and, and looking forward to the project as well. You might know Swede because he did that sculpture out there Wenatchee River Institute, which was just recently stolen. There's a picture of him there with it. I think with that, I can answer questions you might have.
I don't have a question, but just comment. Amazing job coordinating all of this. I think it's a great asset for our community.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a lot of moving parts.
Lot of moving parts.
So if I remember right, David, the, after the park is vacated at Apple Blossom, when newer, the electrical upgrades, the demolition of the fountain area and construction of the stage, all that, is that, that timing as well?
No, that's, that's a separate, the plaza would come first at the intersection of the walkways. The only piece that we would, we're looking at that we might have to do is relocate a light pole.
Yeah.
And we're currently doing the lighting plans and the, for that piece of it.
And what is the timing of the, of the stage? Would it be in place for next year's Apple Blossom?
No, that's
Still out.
Yeah, that's still ways out. Yeah, we'll have the, we're looking at the utility upgrades first.
Yeah.
To make sure that it gets all up to current code and standards and all that good stuff. So that piece is being engineered. We should have that done by October. I'd like to have that going into budget of next year.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And the electrical stuff is many hundreds of thousands of dollars, is it not?
The last estimate we had, it was like 458,000. That was a very 30,000-foot flyover that Apple Blossom had put together. But we're looking at different alternatives that might be able to help, help with that.
Yeah. I know that was the number years ago. And I know we tried to go to the PUD for a little bit of help, and we just couldn't quite get the program together. And I know that when they start plugging all that stuff in down there, there's some issues that we need to
Yeah.
Try to, try to help with. So.
Yeah, we should have a decent plan. We're using Z-Tech, who's done other park electrical plans for us. And we met with them out on site, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, something like that. So he started that process. We're looking at getting electrical meters that can be installed during Apple Blossom so we can
Okay.
check how much draw is being done by each of the areas. And we've worked with Darcy also to look at future electrical needs. So it's putting all that together. So that way we have a nice, consistent plan.
Great. All right. Any other questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the art agreement with Judd Turner, Kevin Patel, and Swede Albert for the Memorial Park Native Peoples' Project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Kulas to approve the art agreements with Judd Turner, Kevin Patel, and Swede Albert for the Memorial Park Native Peoples' Project. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you.
And third is the art maintenance agreement with the State Department of Transportation for the Roundabout. What's the latest?
Yeah, so another project that you guys are familiar with. We've had it for you several times before. This is more of an administrative piece really than anything else. So for the city to be able to maintain anything within Wash Dot's right-of-way, we have to have a maintenance agreement. So the drawing you have up there shows that dash line that kind of goes on an angle sort of down low, that's the edge of the right-of-way. The dark line that goes up to the, to the circle there, that's the irrigation line. So to be able to maintain that irrigation line and then anything else in the circle, we have to have an agreement with Wash Dot. So we have that agreement here. It's, it's something that we would have to do anyway if we have features in there. So that's kind of the first agreement. The second agreement that we have is with the PUD, and this is an inter-local agreement. We've been working with the PUD since the very inception of the project. They helped with the scoring and selection of the artists and all that good stuff. We have this inter-local agreement, which the PUD would waive the irrigation connection fees because it's their water pipeline out there, which is a little over $15,800. So they'll waive that and then also provide us $30,000 to put a couple of their kind of logos, which was sort of planned on the fin piece. So it's, it's about $45,000 to the good for the city for doing that, that project or that agreement.
And when we, when the Roundabout opens in another 90 days or so, or 60, I don't know how many days they have.
June 22nd.
Sure, that day. Are, this artwork will be in there and be there? Or is it, we put it in later?
No, that's the plan. There's been a lot of drama over last week over that. But I think
The plan is we get a few days during the reconstruction period to jump in and get our work done.
Yeah, we have two, three-day no-work periods that Wash Dot's built in. So the first one's coming up right around May 10th. It's a little bit of a soft date, but that's kind of the target date. And that's for us then to go in and put in the footing for the sculpture piece. And then the second one, we just learned, it was yesterday afternoon, I think, that the next day, it's going to be like June 12th.
Okay.
And that's when we would put in all the landscaping, the rocks, and all the other stuff in the middle. So, yeah.
Excellent. Looking forward to that. Yeah, be way different than what would have been there had we not gotten in the middle of that.
Actually, I just drove to Portland last weekend and went through several roundabouts along the way, like through the, is it, what's the little town, Spicela, that area down there? They are the rock with a light pole in the middle.
Yeah.
And they're not super attractive.
Yeah.
And then Ridgefield, coming back the I-5 way, was really interesting. They had a roundabout also right off the highway, but it was full of grapevines that, I don't know how they're maintaining that, but grapevines and signage and stuff like that, because they have a fruit research center right there. So.
Good. Well, hopefully ours is, yeah.
Hopefully.
Stands out a little bit.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Dave? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for city
Number D. Just do both of them. Yeah.
Okay. Motion for city council to approve the Highway 2 Easy Street Roundabout Art Maintenance Agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor to sign. And two, motion for a city council to approve the inter-local agreement between the City of Wenatchee and the Shalane County PUD for hydro, hydropower, public art, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostiti and second by Councilmember Hornby to approve the Highway 2 Easy Street Roundabout Art Maintenance Agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation, authorize the mayor's signature. And two, motion for the city council to approve the inter-local agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Shalane County Public Utility District Number One for hydropower, public art, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work. Regional sports complex agreement, Laura Gloria.
Good evening, Council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item for consideration is the inter-local agreement for the funding of a regional sports complex feasibility study. So that is something that the region has been working on, and that includes the Greater Wenatchee PFD, Shalane County, Douglas County, the City of East Wenatchee, and the port. The inter-local agreement would require a $40,000 contribution from the city's general fund for the work. The total cost of the work is $300,000. So the, the work entails a feasibility study to evaluate the cost and sort of structure of constructing a multi-sports complex in the region. And it splits the cost up between those different partnering agencies. It's pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any other questions, though.
Yeah, I just think from a process standpoint, the way we process these things, this went through the Finance Committee and was approved, which under our normal operating procedures means that we're done until they brought us an inter-local agreement to sign. And so now I've got to bring it back to you to get my signature on the inter-local agreement. But the Finance Committee had already approved it. And so if we didn't have an inter-local agreement, we wouldn't have to be here in front of you. But this has already been through the Finance Committee. I think you guys all know that it's here. So this is just the port want inter-local agreements for all the funding agencies. And I think most of them have already signed it. And we're just, we're the last one, I think, to the table.
We are, yes. We are.
Okay. Any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to approve the inter-local agreement for the funding of a regional sports complex feasibility study, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve the inter-local agreement for the funding of a regional sports complex feasibility study, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Development Agreement, Mr. Jammerman, so this is a public hearing, so for public hearings, we'll first hear from staff, we'll ask any questions of staff, we'll turn over the public for any comment, and then back over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. Mr. Jammerman, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm going to give a brief background on the Wheeler Development Agreement, on your screen is a Google map shot of Maple Street, where it now crosses the canal to go into the Triad Development Project, the, so in twenty nineteen, first of all, we're here tonight to recommend that the council pass Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine to amend the Wheeler Development Agreement with the city, and authorize the mayor to sign the amended agreement. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we were reviewing a three-lot short flat with Mr. Wheeler, and his parcel is right there, where my cursor is at, at the same time, we were also in the midst of a development agreement with the Triad developers, and part of that was the, for us to design and obtain the right-of-way along Maple Street, and they would then in turn build the street. We, during our negotiations with Mr. Wheeler and the design of the street, it was realized that if we ran Maple Street straight up our existing centerline, the street would essentially run through this neighboring property house across the street, you can see right here, and so Mr. Wheeler came to us and said, you know, I really don't want my neighbor's house to be taken out, or, you know, eliminate his driveway, I would be willing to dedicate more of my property to provide this meandering sweep in the Maple Street there as it crosses the canal, and so, based on that, we entered into a development agreement with Mr. Wheeler to have him dedicate more right-of-way than was required of him, and then in turn, he was compensated for that in the form of the development agreement, he had to pay a little bit less for his frontage improvements along Maple Street, and at the end of the day, he was going to have to reimburse the city forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. So fast forward, we did the, you all approved the development agreement with Mr. Wheeler, we then continued on with the design of Maple Street, and as the city was out obtaining more right-of-way from all the adjacent property owners along Maple, it was realized that the dollar amount that we had assumed for Mr. Wheeler, was his right-of-way was, that he was giving us, was about half of what we were paying on the rest of the properties down the street, we were using a previous dollar per square foot that the city had paid on other capital improvement projects, and Mr. Wheeler felt that was a fair compensation, but then later we found that due to inflation, that we were compensating other property owners along the street, so he was essentially getting less compensation than what his neighbors were getting. The second issue that came up during construction is when Pipkin went in to start building the street improvements, it was realized that this, Mr. Wheeler has a carport right there, where my cursor just popped up, actually, there's a picture right there, and that's convenient, and you can see that the street improvements eliminated his ability to use that carport, the design had thought that we were going to get a driveway into the carport, and when the street improvements actually were built, and the street was created, it was found that it was no longer going to be usable, so Mr. Wheeler had to go and build a new garage on his property, because his carport was no longer usable, so about two months ago, Mr. Wheeler came in and talked to myself and some other staff, and he said, I know I agreed to this development agreement, but I didn't realize that I was not getting the dollar value that my neighbors were getting for my property, and we didn't realize that my carport was no longer usable, so we did the math, and at the end of the day, as we looked at the dollar value of what we paid the other neighbors, and the value, well, what we think the carport was was worth, Mr. Wheeler suggested, it was roughly about the forty-six thousand, probably a little bit more, and Mr. Wheeler said, I would be fine with this, if we could just drop the forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy that I owe the city, I'll go on my, on my way, and we'll, we'll call it good, and so, so, so we went, met with the city attorney, met with the Finance Director, and we also presented this to the Public Services Committee, they recommended that we move forward with this amended agreement, so the city attorney drafted the, the resolution that's in your package tonight, and we, because it was a development agreement, we had to bring it back before you hold the public hearing, and ask that you consider this for approval. That's a long story, but I wanted to give you the background, is there any questions?
I'm, I'm curious, was it an engineering mistake, that he wasn't able to use his carport anymore, or was it the way Pipkin built the road, because I know there was other driveway entrances that didn't come out the way we had intended, I believe.
Yeah.
I know those have been since fixed, other than this one.
And we had accurate survey on the property, but as you know, when things get built, it just, the steepness of the driveway and the curve required to get up into the carport, it just wasn't going to be, it probably a little Mini Cooper could have went up there, but any other vehicle would not, and so, he, he just, we all agreed, it was probably better, or it just wasn't going to be usable, so.
So, because as built or as designed was wrong, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is where, where the mistake was made.
It was, I guess, survey, the survey didn't accurately depict how, you know, how the driveway would be laid out, so you can, I know you're familiar with the street, that carport's fairly close to the back of the sidewalk, we tried to warp the sidewalk to get it to work, and at the end of the day, out there with, with Pipkin, it was, just decided this driveway is just not going to work.
Yeah, Mr. Wheeler was being nice to us, and I think, he was being forthcoming, I think if he could have used his carport, I don't think he'd be back in here, but the fact that he has to go build himself into their carport, and quite, I don't think Brad, we haven't budgeted for this, so it's not making the project cost, this was anything from a financial standpoint, so it's just, I think, trying to treat a neighbor fairly based on what actually got built in the right-of-way.
No, I, it sounds like Mr. Wheeler's type of person we want everybody to work with, it sounds like it, but
I think, I think he got, I think he got the short end of the stick two or three ways, a few of the neighbors did, and
Yeah.
It's great we're making it right with him, I'm just trying to figure out how
Is it preventable next time? I mean, I, it, it, is it preventable next time, like, okay, should, should this been Pipkin that paid it, should it been, gee, no, we just kind of messed up, hey, hey, Councilmember Polier, sometimes things just don't work the way we have it on paper, and we run across this once every five years, I don't know, I think that's
I, I think what I would tell you from someone who, because this was a development agreement, right, so then Danielle says we got to bring it back, we do three or four of these a year, sort of, where something didn't quite go the way we thought it was going to go, or maybe a staff person thought this was going to be, this was going to happen, and there was a misunderstanding, right, and they're usually small, they're just little tiny things that you're just sort of doing, because it's like, yeah, let's make it right for this person, or right for that person, or our insurance company will deny a claim on a, you know, there's, it just sort of happens, this is a little bit larger number, and one that Danielle says we have to bring back, but not an unusual thing for the mayor and staff if little things like this happen, right, there were some trees on a corner, remember the corner sidewalk issue, and some of the trees died, and we had to do some, I mean, there's just little things that happen, this is a bigger dollar amount than most, but this, not unusual during construction, that little things pop up that, that we deal with, you just don't always see them, and they're usually small, and we're just trying to, like you say, treat Mr. Wheeler fairly, or whoever it was that felt like they were wronged.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with Mr. Wheeler, by, by any means, my goodness, what a, what a great, great person to work for, with.
Yeah, we, we would, you know, we'd like to say that the engineering is perfect, I think we hit nine fifty, and every now and then, you know, you and I were just talking about a driveway today that's challenging, so it's
It's part of doing business.
Right.
Okay, that's
All right, anybody from the audience wish to address the council on this public hearing item? Seeing no takers, I will turn over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'll move for City Council to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine amending a development agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Roland E. Sandy Wheeler and Diana G. Wheeler, and authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine amending the development agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Roland E. Sandy Wheeler and Diana G. Wheeler, and authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob, wherever Rob went, there you are, over there. All right, Mayor's Report, I don't know, Laura, you and I haven't had a chance to talk about Mayor's Report items, usually I just go back a couple of weeks and look at my calendar, and sort of see what we've been working on, I really don't see it, we are still working with, I, I did have a phone call with Department, State Department of Transportation Chair, Mr. Millar, working on our term sheet, and so I think we're getting closer to being able to time and sign a term sheet for Confluence Parkway, hopefully in the next week or so, that really gets us full authority to, to go full throttle, so I, I think we're getting really, really close, are you, all of our, again, our eighty-five million dollars from the state are in all three budgets, I don't think it's finally passed and been signed by the governor, but I've got every indication that all that money is there, so we're working with staff and engineering, and hiring another engineer, and I think the engineering group is working super hard on all of those sorts of things, so, Laura, keep going.
So, I know we haven't met in a couple of weeks, so this is not new, but it's still exciting, the Police Department went through their reaccreditation process, and so they have been reaccredited, that's a pretty long process, about four years in the making.
Is it official, chief? Do we know when?
Yep.
Have you shared it with me?
Yeah, I'll put it on your calendar.
Okay, excellent.
So that is exciting news, and congratulations to our full Police Department, we have Flywheel next week, so the nineteenth, twentieth, and the twenty-first, Jenny Roganosty was here earlier and passed out some information for you all, and we do get tickets, it's a sponsorship benefit, so if anyone's interested, those are still available, next week on Friday, the twenty-first at four PM, we have the Kenzie's Landing Ribbon Cutting, so that's also another exciting venture, and that's what I've got for today.
Okay, council members, anything for the good of the order?
Couple of things regarding Masala, we'll be having a float, an Apple Blossom Grand Parade, they're using my truck, which will work out great.
But we do not have a delegation here for Apple Blossom, they're coming for Wings and Wheels, or whatever the
They come in the first weekend of October, I believe, yeah, and then also, gentle reminder to Mayor Coons and Mark Kula, Councilmember Kulas, get your deposits in for, okay?
We're doing that
We'll get that done.
Monday, you get yours done?
I will tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, I got to meet with Melanie, she has to help me figure it out, but
David is, is panicking because they don't want to lose the seats, they, if you don't get it in by the twenty-first, you don't get to fly.
Yeah, he'll be in.
Okay, and also, maybe Glenn DeVries could come up and help me out here, we had a meeting this week for the homeless, Columbia River Homeless Task Force, and it went very well, we approved some additional expenditures, we put twenty-five thousand away for a contingency fund for the housing liaison, landlord liaison program.
Yeah, we, one new program we did was a, a, a program for hotel vouchers, we had had funding from the state for that, which will expire at the end of June, putting a new twist on that, and, and providing it to the shelter providers themselves and Outreach, and as well as diversion funds, diversion funds in the hands of Outreach workers can be a really great tool that can keep individuals outside of shelters themselves, with a plan in place, for example, maybe going to a relative in Boise, or something of that nature, can be a great tool to keep people out of the shelter system, so total of seventy-five hundred dollars a month for an eighteen-month period, and, let me see, what else did we have, we extended the contracts, as Councilmember Harold indicated, for Wenatchee, for, let me see, Women's Resource Center
Women's Resource Center, YWCA
And YWCA.
And People's Foundation.
And the, part of the purpose on that was, it gives us time to complete our low-barrier shelters, the pallet shelter process, and the capital for the two safe parks, which takes a lot of time, and also lets us work on our homeless plan update, which will, the community, the councils, and the task force will have the opportunity to then prioritize future funding efforts, and then when we go through new contracts, and we'll probably start that within a year, evaluating that, and then we can have a, a better analysis and tools to really figure out where future funding, remaining funding should be best spent through partnerships and in the community.
This task force asks a lot of questions, and they really dig into detail, so they're doing a great job, I really appreciate their input, we have some great people on there.
Yeah, and I think that, again, the two safe parks are doing remarkable work, and I think Councilmember Polier was saying that people around the state are asking us how, how we're doing it, because it's a very successful program.
We're, we're being watched, and, and good things, yeah, other cities are watching our success.
Very good things, and a big thank you to Glenn and his staff for, you're doing a great job, thank you so much.
Great partnerships.
So are we meeting, and do we have a work session next week?
Yeah, we're next week, April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Mayor, I did go to the Regional Sports Complex Steering Committee, which, obviously, one of the items was the inter-local agreement for the forty thousand to contribute, it was, and you're actually, so everybody should be updated, Senate Bill five thousand and one
It passed today, yeah.
And that gives us a tool that could be used in the future for a public facility district. And so that's, doesn't mean it's going to be used, but it's least possibility then to continue that, so I'm actually, I'm, I'm excited
Yeah, the House passed it, the Senate passed it today, the governor will sign it, and there's actually some other cities, Olympia, Tumwater, you'd be surprised, they do not have a public pool, and so they are excited about using the Public Facility District, Senate Bill five zero one, that we worked on so hard to get adopted, so we'll get the study completed over the next year or so, and then we'll see if there's a plan that the community can get around, and then we'll see if the voters want to put some money into whatever the, the plan ends up being, and this really is the time for those that are sort of watching from home, to sort of get your input as the public process sort of starts, because is, is this going to be an indoor fifty-meter pool, is there going to be a soccer complex with an outdoor pool, is it going to be a soccer park complex and baseball fields and others, this is sort of the time to start thinking about what that might look like, and I think the study is supposed to be broad enough to look at all of those sorts of things, and see if we can get a consensus around what the community wants.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Anybody else for the good of the order?
Two quick things, Your Honor, Monday was Telecommunicator Day, I think, at Rivercom, so I bought him a case of Red Bull.
Yeah, excellent.
They like that, so that was kind of a fun thing, and go say hi, I couldn't do that job, so I do appreciate them, them taking care of that. The WDA is moving forward with an initiative for a guest-first slash customer-first approach to parking with tools given to building owners that they can implement in their leases, tools that the tenant, tenants can give to their employees for parking education of not parking in downtown core, so those things are being implemented, and is an initiative for the Downtown Association to help with alleviate some of the parking issues on the downtown, on the downtown core. Also, the Reimagine Group is meeting, I think, week two, every two weeks, Laura, I was unable to attend this, the first one, but should be on the next several, so we're doing some good stuff for that, reimagine the downtown from Fifth to
Kitata?
Kitata, yeah, Columbia, and, so, been a little busy.
Kitata, yeah, Kitata. All right, any else for the good of the order? If not, we'll see you in two weeks at five fifteen PM, thanks, everybody.